Okay. Yeah, okay, that's what it said. Yeah, so in case you don't want to get recorded, you know, just be quiet, okay? And so I'm going to show the pictures and you can make comments on your pictures while I'm going to show them. But we'll try to keep it, you know, between three and five minutes, five Pamela. Between three and five minutes, the whole thing, because as I said, we got a lot of submissions. Everyone was very diligent, you know, so it's that's very nice to see the whole the participation. One more thing, the next month's picture challenge is gonna be sunset. Okay, and I know that everyone has taken some sunset pictures. I want to make it really easy. So if you have a chance, send them before the beginning of next month, so it can get into the newsletter. And one more item, you know, I sent out some notices regarding our show coming up. And it's coming up on October tenth at the UCC Parish House, which is in Cornwall. And here we got, I don't know if you can see it much. We got the flyers, that's already been printed out, and it's going to go to all these places. So we got the advertisements for that. So if you want to participate in the show, come up with three or four pictures. There are no real rules and regulations regarding the framing of the pictures, as long as it looks kind of, okay, you know, classy. All right, because these people at the church are very prickly, okay, and you don't want to be damned for the rest of your life. And that was my thing. I don't know if anyone wants to say anything besides that.
Yeah, there was a couple of things to go over. One, I'm on vacation, so I don't have the balance that we have in our account, but I think we were running I think we're running about fourteen hundred dollars in the account, which is about normal this time of year. I've received membership dues from about a dozen people so far. So if you haven't paid your dues, if you could mail a check to me, that would be good. We also recently received a thousand dollar check from the town of Cornwall. And this was organized through Lazlo, he wrote a, and Pat. And Pat is a school teacher at the high school, I think, she does a class on photography. And her husband, I think he, I don't know if he works for the town, but he has something to do with the collection of the okay, and he has something to do with the collection of the cans. And they pick an organization to donate the money from the cans. So Pat mentioned this to Lazlo, and Lazlo wrote a very nice letter to the people in charge, and they approved us, and we received a check for a thousand dollars. And the plan for those funds is to create a scholarship. Not sure if we'll do two five hundred dollar scholarships, or one one thousand dollar scholarship, but to do a scholarship for HCC to one of the high school students. One or more, depending on how we do it. So we're trying to work on the details and come up with what the criteria is for the scholarship. I put something together and sent it to you, Lazlo and Pat, right before I came on vacation, so I don't know if you got a chance to look at that. But we should probably try to finalize that, and then we can give some more details to the the club on how that's going to work. If we break it up into five hundred dollar increments, then perhaps we could do another five hundred next year. And then by by the third year, figure out how we could get together the funds to maybe continue this as a yearly thing. So we'll see how that, see how it goes. But that's that's the plan and how we plan to spend that money. So thank you, Lazlo, and I don't think Pat is on, but thank you for organizing that, so that we can do that.
Right now. He's just coming up, so you have to repeat everything now that you said.
She knows most of it, but I'll make her at least. I'll wait till she gets on before I continue.
All right.
It says connecting on my
Connecting, connecting, connect. Can you see that?
Yep, I can. Hi, Pat, how are you?
I'm doing well. How about you guys?
So Pat, I was just telling the other club members about the thousand dollars that we got from the town of Cornwall and how we intend to use those funds. So I'm not going to repeat the whole thing, because you you kind of know what that's all about. But I was just in the process of thanking Lazlo and you for organizing that, and so that we're able to to do that on behalf of the club.
Yes, that's wonderful. I'm glad, and let's keep promoting the interaction between the club and the high school. We can talk more about that in another time, because I'm sure you have your hands full for tonight.
Yeah, but I did want to say thank you, and I kind of let the other club members know what that was all about, because I did receive the check and I deposited it, and and I also had sent you and Lazlo some ideas about some requirements for it, and it's something that we can talk about and continue discussions on, but I wanted to bring them into the loop. So thank you, thank you to you and Lazlo. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Okay, and so anyway, that brought our account up to about twenty four hundred, but obviously that money will be going out, so we're running about fourteen hundred. Yeah, again, so if you haven't paid your membership dues, if you could send that to me, that would be good. Typically, we will leave you on the membership list until December, and then we kick you off if it's not in by then, so you have a little bit of time, but try to get that into me. Lazlo mentioned the show, so I think that we probably need to maybe get a list of who's going to participate, and we'll get some more details about the the drop off date for the photos and at last, are they hanging the photos, or are we hanging them?
We are going to hang the photos. Probably I gotta talk to Brian when he's gonna be around one day.
So
A lot of people together to do it. The show is gonna be opening Sunday, October tenth at eleven thirty. And so probably the the Thursday or Wednesday, probably Thursday before that, we can do the hanging. So count on that, we could be
All right, so we'll send out some details on that and ask for volunteers, so look for that. But as Lazlo mentioned, please make sure that they are that the photos that you do choose are ready for hanging, and that they, you know, are professional looking, so that they represent the the club well.
And roughly three or four pictures, you know, together, that's what they can accommodate.
Right, okay.
Three or four pictures per member, I'm sorry.
Right, right, right. I think that's all I had to go over. I guess I would just mention, thank you, Lazlo, for all your work you do on the newsletter. And just remind folks to send you articles. Or, you know, sometimes it might be, you know, share your photos of a vacation you went on, or if there's a place that you discovered is great to photograph, maybe you can send that information to Lazlo, or you could put it in the newsletter. Or if there's any tips that you came across that you think might be useful for members, send it to Lazlo, so that, you know, there's some contribution from the club members into the newsletter. I did the newsletter myself for about seven years, and I know it's difficult sometimes to come up with the content, and it's a newsletter for the whole club, so the whole club should, you know, participate and, you know, try to send some submissions in, so it doesn't have to be every month, but I know it's a struggle when you're getting ready to finalize it, and you don't have enough content, so please remember to send some stuff to Lazlo if you can.
Appreciate it.
And I think that that's all I got. Does anybody have any questions about the the club, or what what our schedule, or anything like that, that you need to discuss before we do the member showcase?
Pamela. Pam?
Pam?
Hi, everybody. I'm a new member, so your
Hi, welcome.
Your Sherwin Green pop-up and gallery worked wonders.
Oh, great. That's the first time we've done that, so that was great.
Oh, well. It was, it was, I would say charismatic Lazlo who started talking with me. Yeah. Lazlo, and 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 then I said, well, this seems like a very sympathetic, sympathetic group, a nice group. And and you'll see my work later. So very honored to be now officially a member of the club. And then I'm gonna go and have to go abroad. So yes, I will have to drop off my three, four images before the twenty eighth, so I don't know where I can drop that off. It's just a quick, you know, question.
You can get it to me. I keep seeing your husband every Tuesday coming in for a cup of coffee while we are
Basically, my husband, okay.
So he can bring them, or you can bring them either way.
Okay. Yeah, he mentioned He saw you often. He saw you often at Giffords. So we'll do, we'll do. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else?
Well, I just want to say hi. I'm a new member. My name is Maria Gi.
Hi, Maria. How are you?
I'm excited to be part of this club. This, I met someone over in Sharon.
Maybe Jeff?
Could be, was Yeah, was on the green. And he had given me, you know, just a pamphlet, and then, so I just signed up. So I'm not very familiar with, you know, your club, or what you guys do, or
Did you get the, I think I sent that out to the new members, so I just want to make sure I included you. Did you get that HCC, it's kind of like a user guide or guidelines? Did you get that document that I sent?
No.
Okay, so that will explain the club and what we do, and what competitions we participate in, and what this member showcase is, so I thought I sent it to all new members, but I might have missed you, so I'll when I get back home, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, maybe went into my spam or something, so.
Okay, I'll try it again when I get home then, because that will be very helpful, I think. And Pamela, you should have got yours. Did you get yours?
Let me just check in my in my second email box. One second.
Yeah, I think I sent it about, I'm gonna say maybe two weeks ago.
Okay, so where would we drop off the pictures?
I will send out, let me make a note for that. Well, I will send out a note regarding that, okay? So it's gonna be at the the UCC Parish House, the United Church of Christ in Cornwall Congregation, that's the longer version of it. And it's in Cornwall, right in the center of Cornwall. And it's gonna, we are gonna be at the parish house, so I will send you directions and everything, and all the direct, you know, what you are supposed to do, okay?
Yeah, and in and in that document that I sent out, it talks about how to prepare your photos for a show. There's a document that you put on the back of the photo and on the front of the photo that has the information. The title of the picture, the price, your name, and contact information, et cetera. So all of that will be in that book that I sent out. And I was thinking of actually just sending that out to everybody, just as a reminder to go through that, because it talks about the competitions and whatnot. So I think when I get back home, I'll just send that out to everybody.
I have it done. Wonderful job, because it wasn't opened yet, so I have it, and a wonderful photo on the cover. Wonderful photo.
Okay, cool.
I just want to mention, I don't know how many people are aware of the Adobe Max conference? I don't know if you do know about it, or if you don't know about it, but it's October twenty sixth through twenty eighth. It's a virtual international conference on creativity and photography, and it's free, and you can sign for it, and you can join whatever modules you want. There are hundreds of them. And it's over a three day period. You just pick the courses you want to take, and you can get to it by going to max.adobe.com, and you just sign up, and you can go to the conference.
Joan, send me the link, and and I will put it into the next newsletter.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you for letting us know about that.
Thank you. Bruce?
I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Bruce Teked. I'm a new member, well, and and that's a strange man at the
Welcome, Bruce.
Ag fair named Lazlo, who invited me to this, so I appreciate that very much, and I'm here to learn as much as I can.
Hi, Bruce, welcome.
Unfortunately, I won't be around for the show, because I have to go out to New Mexico to take pictures.
Oh, jeez. Poor you. Can I fit in your suitcase?
Nice to be here. Thank you.
All right, welcome.
All right. Beala?
I'll just introduce myself again as well. Hi, Beala Salendi, also a new member. Delighted to meet you all. I I found the way here indirectly via Heidi. Hi, Heidi. Thanks for recommending this place to my colleague, who then recommended it to me. So here I am, and I'm just already feeling, you know, inspired and starting to take my photography a bit more seriously, which is great, so happy to be here.
Beala is very active on our Facebook site, so in case any of you guys on Facebook you haven't seen our site, you know, we are, you know, Who's a Tony Camera Club? And he's putting up some extraordinary pictures, you know, especially still life pictures. Really, really nice, you know, so we got a, we got a good one for for the competitions. Yeah, we're going to keep you. All right.
All these new members, the competition for these competitions is gonna be tough. Making me nervous.
Will we get started?
Yes, I think so.
So let's see. I go with the screen sharing, right? Share it, okay?
For some of the news, for some of the, some of the new members, this member showcase is something that we've done just about every season, the kickoff the season. And typically, we can do slideshows with music and some combined photos and video, and they're they're actually quite awesome, but because of the Zoom and the the, I don't know if it's because of the size of the files, or the audio, or whatnot, we kind of had to go with this approach to just show the photos, and we can talk about them or just go through them, but hopefully, when we get back to doing face to face, maybe we can do another member showcase and kind of do it the old the old way, and I think it's enjoyable to see the pictures in that way.
So as I said, you know, we can try to keep it short, because it's thirteen submissions, which is more than we ever got. Thank you for the new members. So I'm going to start with Bert. And actually, Bert's is gonna be the longest one, but I ask him, I beck him on my knees to keep it short, so so can you all see my desktop?
Yes, yes.
That's, that's a good sign, right? Right over there. Okay, here's Bert. And let's start with that. Okay, so Bert.
Okay. Well, this was it. Thank you for watching, everybody, and see you next time.
That was short. Nice.
No, I was the everybody can hear me, I hope. I was a couple of years ago, I was at a photo conference, and one photographer who is very good at close-ups and flowers mentioned a program that he had just noticed. It was called Smart Photo Editor. And here is a quick, what is on their website, what they do, that can do a few things quicker than Photoshop, like replacing the background of defocusing it, or removing objects, or having montages. But the most important thing of this program was that you can use it for effects. Mostly effects in photo that you click on one picture, and you, I mean, there are hundreds and hundreds of effects in that program, and people who make effects, they putting them up there, and you can use it. So I want to show some of the effects, what I used on some pictures, just sometimes you get bored with making, and if you have a picture and you want to do something different, then I go in this program and try something if that will will work. So yeah, go to the first picture with Lazlo. So this was a picture from a guy, one of those jumpers on the bicycle, and then with one click, I did I could make it just in this watercolor picture.
Just one click.
The next picture. Yeah, this, the Audubon Center had an open day one time, so they had this owl on their arm, and so you could get really close to take a picture, and the next two pictures I made also in this program from using the picture of this owl, this one and this one. And then the next picture, that was somewhere, I think I'm not sure where it was, but I took a picture of this plant, and then I made this out of it, or the program. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, that's pretty.
And that mainly one click, you know, so it's really
Right, it is already baked into it, and and there are so many, there are when I started water program, maybe five years ago, there were six hundred different effects. I think now they are up to a thousand already. And yeah, you can, thank God, you can put in your favorites, so you don't have every time you have to go in two thousands, thousands of those effects. This was a still life, what I saw somewhere, and it looked very boring. And then I thought, well, I let it put in these effects, and I think it made it a lot better, so you can see, you can have the effects, and then you can save the effect and put it in another effect, because the paper and the printing, or this this border was another effect, so you can, you know, three effects. This is on the way between Sharon and the
Amania.
Yeah, over Seid, yeah. And okay, the next effect is if you are in a snowstorm and you took the picture there. I mean, this is, so this is all one, two-click effects, what, you know, is sometimes nice to do. I don't think we can use this for competition. Lazlo and I went one time in, I think it was in Lakeville, there was a powwow. And then What'd you say?
Great Barrington.
Oh, it was in Great Barrington, you're right. And then I made this this kind of old movie still out of it, so the next you know, it has already baked in those little little things for if it is a listen, little film thing. This is was in Cambodia, very famous temple. And, you know, they have tons of different types of frames, what you can put on it, and what you can, what you can use it for. Yeah, keep going. This, we took, I think it was also with Lazlo and Vicki, when we walked somewhere in the Audubon Center, and you can also do it. Different types of frame. I think a lot of people who make cards or posters use this program to make it a little bit more interesting. What they sell, but special for the flowers.
It's beautiful by itself. Yeah, it glows.
The nice thing is that you, you can keep trying things, and some some work and some not, but that's yeah, that's that's because there are so many different, different things. This this bird was taken on my bird feeder from close by, and look at the next picture. You don't have an idea. Here it, so baked in is already the rippled water with the reflection. So it's really, and it's almost like it also like it is a watercolor, you know, and then the next one is actually you can make it in a book.
Yeah, that's neat. Gross peak.
Rabbit.
And this little rabbit, I
These will make these one to rabbits too. Awesome effort.
Right, well, so I gave him some artificial
Reproducing
food. This doll I had saw in an antique store somewhere, I had no idea what what I could do with it, but I made the doll for twins.
That's kind of creepy. I don't think I like that one.
So you have also very nice frames and
That's a nice frame.
Everything, you know, but yeah, so this is the picture I made. This is a fair, this was one thing, but but distorted it very much, but it's still kind of an interesting look. It's on the Who's a Tony River here. Kind of very modern, modern art.
End of my photography.
Okay, this, we saw this Luke Marmen artist, one of those those people who defaced it, so I thought, well, it needs to be in a frame. Looks a little better there. Okay. Go on. This woman I took also at one of the photography conferences, they have a lot of models there, and I thought her eyes were so amazing, so I wanted to actually get more emphasis on her eyes, so I took this with it.
And it's the same paper texture that was used in one of the other photos?
Yeah, 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 once you have that, and then you said, well, let's do it on some other other texture or other paper, and then they have this, yeah, they have in categories. This was in in Vietnam about, I think last year, this is a place where there are a lot of weddings, and actually, there was a photographer behind them, which I took away, took out in Photoshop, and then I thought, well, let's see if I can make it a little bit more interesting. So let's make it a little older, older looking. This was a little bonsai tree, and yeah, I made an kind of an impressionistic view from it. And those little Vietnamese curls, I, it looks like me, I can get in a picture book setting, so that's what I tried to do with it. I mean, so the thing is, if you, yeah, go ahead, Lazlo, if you do this, this, then they completely become like the drawing, you know, and then you can brush out what you don't want to have done. So then it's kind of an artificial effect. And this is the last one. These are four cats and what I saw somewhere. And I absolutely don't like cats, so the next one I made this, this is how I see cats, you know, they're creepy animals for me. So so in the the next slide will give you the website, if you're interested.
Yeah, all right.
And I think the program is maybe thirty, thirty-five dollars. So if you, and and you can check it out for for free for a month, I think so. It's, yeah, I think it's it's a steal, especially if you like to to play a lot, make your pictures now and then.
All right, let's see. Let's go back to the, thank you, Bert. Really appreciate it. That's you can get lots of great effects with these things, you know.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Daily, are you Dutch?
Yeah.
Okay, because my best friend, when I grew up in Holland, was Sandra Ackerman, and I wonder if she's related to you? From the Hague?
Well, she's not related. Well, all Dutch people are related, maybe, yeah.
That would be a crazy coincidence, if Sandra Ackerman would be your little niece and
No, that is my, 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 my wife is Ackerman, and she, but because I'm Bert Smith, silly, I'm on my wife's computer, so that's why the name because I'm Bert Schmidt, silly, I'm on my wife's computer, so that's why the name. She, you see, you see his name there.
Okay, never mind, okay, good, good, good. We'll talk, we'll talk.
Next one is down.
So unfortunately, I get to follow Bert, and mine's a lot boring compared to his, but. What I basically did is put together just a a showing of pictures from the various national parks across the United States. I like to visit the parks and with my family, and I've been, there's, I think there's sixty-three national parks, and I've only been to about nine of them, so I have a lot more to go, but these are just photos from some of the ones that I have visited. So you can go.
That's beauty. Pamela, that probably makes you feel at home, right?
Oh, totally, yes.
I'm sure.
Yeah, so I've been there twice, so this was the most recent visit in two thousand eighteen, or two thousand nineteen. So these pictures are from two thousand twelve, as you can see, so I went back and tried to reprocess them. I'm not even sure what camera I had back then. But yeah, this was Denali National Park. We didn't have the greatest weather.
Nice black and white.
And this is Congaree, this was a tough one to photograph. I went there this past summer in June, I think it was. And the water was very, very low. Sometimes the water is so high, it goes over this boardwalk, and it was so low. But it just made, it was, it was difficult to photograph, there just wasn't a lot there. We did see this little guy going in.
Beautiful, I never see an owl out in the open.
I caught this guy, tracked him a little, a little ways, I'm not sure he said something in his mouth, I don't know what that was, but it was almost bigger than him.
Like a butterfly.
And this is where the water is supposed to be much higher, and it's quite low, so it doesn't look the most beautiful, but I wanted to at least show what it looked like off the boardwalk. Lots of snakes were in there. So this was the Badlands that I went to in two thousand eighteen. That place was just beautiful. The colors are amazing. So my sister, we went, we went hiking through the Badlands, my sister and I, and my mother was afraid for us because of the rattlesnakes, but I saw this little bird on the sign, so I had to take it. We didn't tell her about the sign till after we were done hiking, though.
Everyone can see the pictures alright, I suppose, right?
Yep.
But that's good, just want to make sure.
Yeah, so in addition to the landscape, I like to take photos of the wildlife, so I do that whenever I'm in the parks. So this one is one of our newest parks. I think this one became a park when Obama was in office. This is in California, and I fly out there frequently for work. So I usually try to take an extra day or so and go to the park, so this year I went to Yosemite, and I think this was two thousand nineteen, I went to the Penacles. So my sister and I hiked from the bottom to the top, took most of the day to get up there and back down, but it was beautiful, it was worth it.
So it got the name, huh?
And then this guy we saw as we were driving out, we didn't see hardly any wildlife. We wanted to see the vultures, they were supposedly vultures there, we couldn't see any, but but I saw this guy. So I don't get to travel out of the country much, but as you can see, we have an awful lot to see in the United States, that's, that's pretty. So the Shenandoah, I went there this past summer. Again, right after I went to Congaree, I went to Shenandoah, and the weather did not cooperate. So one of the things about Shenandoah is it has beautiful scenery, but I didn't get to see a lot of it, because it was very foggy, and I only had one day. So we did go on some hikes. So the Appalachian Trail goes through there, so my sister and I hiked a portion of the Appalachian in the park. So I did the best I could with the fog. And then the Grand Tetons and Yellowstone are my two favorite parks, and they're the parks that I've visited the most. I've been to each of them three times, so this was obviously in the Grand Tetons. I forget what the name of that church is. It's beautiful there. And they, they have a road called Moose Wilson Road, and almost always see moose on that road. Hence the name. And I came across this guy who was doing a painting in the Tetons, and I asked him if I could take a photo, and he, he said yes, so it was kind of neat, he's taking a, he's actually paint, actually, he's painting those birch trees that are over on the right-hand side. You can see if you look at his picture, and then you look over at the birch trees, you'll see that's what he was painting. Yeah, like I said, Yellowstone, which actually encompasses three different states, mostly Wyoming, but there's a section of it in Idaho and a small section in Montana. But this one I've been several times, so these pictures are from either two thousand twelve, fourteen, or sixteen. There's actually a trail now that you can take, and you can get up to the top and view this from the top. And it's beautiful, but my sister and I, we've been there three times, and all three times the trail was closed. So we haven't gotten up there yet, so we got to go back. The thing I like about Yellowstone, too, is it has so much wildlife. You see more wildlife there than any of the other parks. The colors are amazing there. It has so much color and texture.
You can get very close to these places, right? I mean, these.
Yeah, yeah, they have the boardwalks that go up right alongside these. And these are my most recent, so it was quite hazy when I went to Yosemite because of the fires that are in California right now. They did affect the view, so we went out at sunrise trying to get some photos, but it was quite, like I said, quite hazy, but we didn't do too bad. Yeah, so that's half, half dome, I guess that's what that's called.
That's going other direction.
So I always saw these photos with reflections, and most of the water is dried up in California. So we were almost exiting the park, and I saw this little pull-off, nobody was there, I said to my sister, oh, let's just go see what's down there. It's like, I, it looks like there's a little stream or something, let's just go. And when I went down there, I was so shocked to see this was the view from, from there, so we were the only ones there. And it was just enough water, that's like two inches deep, but just enough to get some reflections.
Iconic shot.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, when I drove down the road, so we got in the car, so we went down this steep bank, we got this picture all by ourselves, we were so happy with ourselves. And we got in the car, and we drove, oh my gosh, we drove like one minute. And then there was a pull-off that had almost that same view. So that's why you see that all the time. And then this is the latest one that I went to, is Akadia Open Main, we just got back from there. This was Cadillac Mountain, yeah, we, you have to get reservations now to go up. And we got the reservation, and it was so foggy, couldn't see anything, so each day they open up the reservations again at ten-thirty in the morning, and you can try to get same-day reservations, and we were able to do that, so we went back in the evening, and we were able to get some nice shots in the evening.
Beautiful.
Beautiful shots.
Alright, thank you.
You have done lots of traveling, that's for sure.
Well done.
Alright, let's see. Next one is Heidi. Heidi, are you here?
Yes, I'm here. So Dawn is a really hard act to follow. And I don't have a theme, but I am a, just a quick intro for those who don't know me, I am a beginner photographer, so the good news is I've got more shots in this than I did last year. So that's a plus, and my theme is pictures that came out well. Is that came out well in the last four to five months. So this first one here is a barn swallow, I took this picture at Bartholomew's Cabal nearby. And I took it the day after taking Sarah Blodgett's course on how to take pictures of birds. So this is one of my favorite ones. There's another one coming up. This one is quite possibly my favorite photo to date. I call it Be Right Back. And everyone knows, I think, that I love birds, and so I really, really like this one, and this is one of the ones that I recently had printed because I'm going to have it framed and bring it to our show.
Very nice.
This one is cabin number five. This was a shot that I took when I went with Jeff on the Hudson field trip through the club, and he took us to this area called, I don't know if it's officially called, Shanty Town. Or this is a name that Laszlo made up, I'm not sure, but this is one of the camps, and, or I guess that used to be like a fishing camp. And it's since been abandoned, as you can tell, and the irony of this picture is that there's actually a little lock on that door, even though the side is completely open.
That's cute.
Okay, so this is a daffodil, I took at Laurel Ridge Daffodils nearby, and I made it there pretty late in the season. So I'm surprised that there's not any dying daffodils in the background, I think. It came out nice and clear, but this was one of the ones that I was pretty happy to get a shot where no dead daffodils were there, so next year I have it on my calendar to go earlier, so that I can get them all in bloom.
So nice, clear shot.
This one I took up in Camden, Maine, I really I really like the lines in this photo, so this was Camden, Maine, we were up at the harbor. I just love how we've got the line from the sail, the line from the boat, and then in the middle, sandwiched in between, we've got the the steering wheel, and I just, this seemed like an iconic boat photo to me.
I also like the, the red, white, and blue that's in the flag, and then the red, white, and blue that's in the boat and the life jacket, or it looks red to me, the life jacket and the sail, kind of cool.
Yeah, and then with the blue, it just sort of all tied together, so walking along, you know, the waters that happened to catch that shot, which it was really a very bright day, and there weren't a lot of great shots for me to be had, so I was pretty happy with that one.
Yeah, that was nice.
This is a mushroom shot taken on a hike up to Bear Mount in Connecticut. I really hate mushrooms. I presume this is deadly poisonous. But it was really cute, and this isn't the base of a tree, and it's sort of like a little, I don't know, a table in Lily Footland. This again is Shanty Town, I call this one the Hudson Riviera. And this one is the George Washington Bridge. So my husband and I had to go to a wedding in New Jersey, and we were in traffic driving slowly, and I was in the passenger side, and I took this with my iPhone eight. And then I cropped it way in, and to my surprise, it came out really clear, so clear that I just had a big picture of it printed, and I will be framing it for the show.
So it shows that you can take really good pictures with your iPhone, which is always with you.
Yeah, and that's it.
Alright, thank you, Heidi, thank you. Alright, next one is Ian. Do we know that guy?
Yes.
Alright. Here we go.
This is down on the river, very close by us, and it's just some foam in the background, obviously with some bluebells, and it's just, I just love bluebells anyway, but a nice, clear shot. And this is it was England playing against Australia rugby, and in twenty, I think sixteen. And I just loved the picture, I was in the crowd, and these two guys were sitting next to me. And I said, can I take, take a picture, and that's, that was the result. And I, I love the picture of the, the expressions of the two guys on the left. And then if you look bottom right, there's a man who's there's something seriously wrong with him, anyway. So anyway, that.
It's a good shot.
It's, it's, it's great, and I've, I've never actually done anything with it, but I I just enjoy the picture, it's fantastic, but, you know. Anyway, next please. And this is a little dipper, which was taken at the same time as the foaming water first picture you saw. And they are just such little, they're water blackbirds, they're just beautiful little creatures, and the next one is a dipper, not so good flying, I just bought a new camera, which is a an Olympus EM1 Mark III, and because of my stroke and everything, so it's a bit easier to handle. And I'm just learning to use it, so it's, the ISO is a bit bit high, and that was, anyway, right, next is top left, Hand of God. That's my, one of my sunset pictures, which I might put in.
That's beautiful.
And, and that's not, not quite the view from our house, but it's, it's a view above our house, about a hundred yards above the house. It always gets sunsets like that, but it's, it is actually, actually, it's the equinox now, so they're, they're pretty good coming up this next few weeks. And this is a girl called Hattie Briggs. I'd never been to a concert before like this, but I was or Jane and I were invited to to go to it, it's just down below us, and she was, have any of you heard of Alfie Boe?
No.
He's quite a singer in this country, and she was singing with him around the country on various tours he went, and she, she's got a lovely voice, beautiful voice, anyway. And this is, I was on a walk, and it's, it's unfortunately, it's not real, it's a, but a wonderful character, I just, and Laszlo likes him as well, I just think he's fantastic, and and, and this is Charford, very close to where we live, and I gave it some it's an old-looking village, so I gave it some old-looking treatment, and that's come out quite well. And this is, we went at Slimbridge, Peter Scott, Sir Peter Scott, you've probably heard of him. He's, he founded Slimbridge, and we went on a safari with the the camera club, Stroud Camera Club, and this was picture of a bitten, which suddenly took off, and I, I fired off for quite a few shots. And I put all four of them together, so that's, I quite like that, it's, it's quite a.
Yeah, that's neat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is a, an architectural site that the camera club also went to, very close to us, and it's I think there's, I mean, there's some such clever people around, and I'm just noticed that I've actually caught, totally by accident, the, the shadow in, in the bottom right.
So, oh yeah, that's neat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's quite nice to see. Anyways, just gorgeous. This is um, the Olympics. We won a gold in England, British GB won a gold in the um, new, new discipline, which is skateboarding. And this is actually um, cycling, BMXing. But anyway, all of a sudden, I, I discovered that we've got this park four miles from where I live. And Charlotte Worthington won the gold for, for, for Great Britain, um, trained here. And these youngsters are just utterly amazing. And you wouldn't believe it, but can we see the next picture, please?
All right.
Um, this is what they're sorting, they're getting up to doing. And then the next.
Oh.
And they are absolutely incredible. And this, this complex is now closed. You wouldn't believe it. Britain does something really fantastic. It gets, is fantastic. And we, we got a, a, um, a bronze, a thirteen year old girl got a bronze in um, skateboarding. And then it has now been closed. But anyway, the hope is that we're going to be able to, they'll, they'll be able to get another one going soon. Um, but these people, these youngsters, they've got so, you know, so much energy and enthusiasm. And they're, they're all so complimentary to each other and are really enthusiastic and supportive. And it keeps them off, I'd say the streets, but it keeps them occupied, keeps them doing things. And it's absolutely wonderful. This is um, Shelsley Walsh, which is the oldest hill climb in the, in the world, I believe. And this is going up. And then the next one is another one going up.
Wow.
But it looks like he's going down. He's actually going up.
I was spinning, that's for sure.
Yeah. And then this is a short horned grasshopper, which I saw on a, um, we've got a wonderful nature um, park for um butterflies, etc. Very close by. And so that there.
That detail's amazing. That's cool.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. That's beautiful.
Nice. Who was opposing for you?
Very nice.
That's beautiful. Very nice, Ian.
Awesome.
Are you talking Ian? Can you hear us?
Yes.
Ian?
He's a little frozen.
This again? That was a nice, nice show though, but.
Nice variety.
Yeah. So only just. It's fun, huh? All right, next one is gonna be Jeff. Jeff, are you here? I don't think so. But he did submit pictures, so I'm just going to go through the, through them.
Nice.
These.
Nice.
I think he took these pictures at the Audubon in, in Sharon. Yeah, I think so.
Or B-bomb.
Ready.
And that's what is hard to do, you know, because it's a little bird in flight.
It's nice, just, just enough motion to show the wings are moving, but you can still see the detail on the bird. It's nice.
That's a field of one twelve between Lime Rock and uh, and Lakeville.
It's like black eyed Susies.
Same field, I presume. That was at a Revolutionary War, no, no, sorry, was the French Indian War. Was it French India? Yeah, French Indian War reenactment in Ocean, Connecticut.
Nice.
Some nice, nice black and whites and some really nice stuff, very classy. I like the black and whites. Here comes Joanne. Joanne has got all black and white pictures. Let me just see, why do I have small, okay, here we go. There we go, Joanne, are, are you here?
I am.
Okay, so if you want to say a few words about them?
Sure. Um, the, this is um, the Poughkeepsie train station. I had done a study of this several years ago for um, someone who had, who I was doing photography with. And it's just basically, the whole series was about passages. So this, you can go to the next one.
Nice, oh.
Um, it's a fascinating building. And uh, until I took a look at it with black and white photography, I never realized exactly the angles and the amount of architecture there was to see there.
Oh, sorry.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. Looking there. I think the next picture came out rather small, so I'm just going to.
You can just skip it. And this was um, actually one of the passages. And I happened to catch this mom and her daughter. And it occurred to me that they were in absolutely two different worlds. And they weren't waiting for a train. They were just there and mom was on her phone and little girl was just off on her side. And I thought to myself, wow, they have all this time together and they're just hanging out in two separate spaces. Go ahead.
That's precious moment.
Yeah. Another one of the passages, which actually smells really bad.
And that's inside the station?
It is between the station and the parking lot, looking from the platform out towards the parking lot.
And no problem getting inside, huh?
Oh, no. And that's uh, where you go to take the train. And what happened to be nobody there that day. Uh, this is my favorite building of all time. This is the Bartevan eighteen sixty-nine Opera House in Poughkeepsie. And uh, for years I've ushered there and no longer do that. But because of that, I was always able to explore the theater when there was nobody around. So it was just, it's a, it's a really magical building. So that's the lobby before a performance. Go ahead.
Beautiful place.
Yeah, it's um, it's got amazing lines, amazing history, really wonderful architecture. You can go. Just some detail from the theater, one of the flies and the, and the ropes to pull up from the old days that they saved. And that's.
Beautiful.
Side of the theater.
Gorgeous theater.
It is beautiful.
This is the Unicredit Pavilion in Milan, which is also one of my favorite buildings. And um, I'm, one of my relatives um, was one of the architects for this building. And so I got to go in on a day when the building was closed and he brought me in and we did a little tour. Um, fascinating building, totally eco, green building with lots of solar energy and all of those um, those uh panels on the windows uh move and they rotate according to where the sun is. So the, the inside of the building is always flooded with light. Uh, you can go.
Oh, nice.
From the side of the entrance to the pavilion, looking up at the Unicredit.
Very nice framing.
Yeah, wasn't me, it was the architect. This is the.
You have a good eye.
This is the inside of that building with the rotating um louvers. And this is actually a nursery where the employees' um children go to school. And it's completely light filled and every, all of the furniture and all of the walls uh move and rotate and can serve various functions. Fascinating building. Go ahead. Um, this is the staircase getting from downstairs up into a, a multi-purpose area where they have conferences. Really amazing lines in this building.
Nice design.
And this is just some outside shots that I took of texture. I was sort of playing around with how, how many different textures I could find. This is at Innisfree.
I was just gonna say that. It looks like Innisfree.
Almost looks like petrified meerkats.
That's the only place I've seen those. So it looked familiar.
Um, this is at Montgomery Place. And I happened to be walking with a friend of mine, Karen, and happened to turn around and this was behind us. And it was one of those things where you walk by it, you don't see it. And then if you look behind you, you say, hmm, I didn't even know that was there.
Yeah, that's cool.
And this was um, it's uh Great Camp Sagamore in the Adirondacks. I was just playing with texture and curves. And I think the last one, this I call the trouble with tribbles. If anybody is a Star Trek fan, you know what I'm talking about. Little guys were along the side of the road and they just looked to me like little, little creatures, little hairy creatures.
So cool.
And I think that's it.
Thank you, Joanne, for the beautiful black and whites.
They were great.
Yeah.
Yeah, really nice, Joanne, really strong graphic sense.
Thank you.
Line and texture.
Fun, lot of fun to work in black and white.
Nice.
Nice.
All right, next one is me. All right, uh. See, we start right here. Oh, these are mainly gonna be sunset and sunrise pictures. We went away on vacation to Warwick Road Island and uh, well, I got up early and I went to bed late, you know, so I, I got these pictures. And that's quickly, that was at the, at the place where we were staying, you know, that's just outside of, of, of the, of the window pretty much. They, they had beautiful sunrises and, and really gorgeous sunsets, you know, just, I, I don't know what it is, but. Yeah.
Beautiful.
That beautiful.
And this uh, like a little send bar. At the end of it, there is a uh, uh, well, uh, lighthouse. And the, the send bar is uh, gets underwater when the tide comes up. And, and lots of times it comes up very soon. So just a week before we got over there, a couple of people were washed away and died. You know, that's how fast the tide comes up. Okay, so that's just absolutely amazing. Here's the memorial for the little girl, ten years old, died there. And that's send bar. That's another. Whole town was mourning her. And these are the customary seagulls, you know, and the lighthouse in the back. Slight was a little bit closer. Those are the only nice one. All right, now where are we going? Something happened over here. Computer froze. Well, you guys, I don't know what's going to happen now. My computer completely froze. That's not, people moving, but my keyboard is dead. Okay, all right, let's go back over here. All right, good. And that's, I think that's a same picture, but a little bit kind of like artistic rendering of it.
Hmm, that's nice.
Just uh, different way of looking at things. And that one is at Rocky Point, it's called. Uh, they used to have a amusement park over there many, many years ago. That's what it was famous about. And that's at Sunrise again. There's the same bridge at Sunrise. That lady was walking over there with her dog and picking up garbage that other people left on the previous night. Kind of her. And that's the same place, Rocky Point. Again, the sun is rising.
Makes me wish I would get up earlier in the morning.
You have to be at the ocean.
I'm here in Provincetown and I didn't get up that early. I should have.
Oh, you have the best sunsets and sunrises.
I got the sunset, but the sunrise is too early. Now I'm going home tomorrow, so I missed, I missed out, I guess. The tides are beautiful, Ashel.
And these are, came from the World Fair, you know, somehow ended up over there, so don't ask me. No one seems to know how they got there. And that uh, one, she was just, I don't know what she probably reading, having her cup of coffee early in the morning.
Good shot.
These guys fishing, just caught something.
How long did you have to wait for that?
Uh, it's about ten minutes. People, I just, I don't know, just by the shoreline, you know, so just like the way that she looked. And that's a crab that the ma, met, met, met the demise, I don't know what you call it, just died. That's another one. That's why it's not alive either.
Looks pretty harmless to me.
On the other side of the bay, they had these uh, windmills. That's, that's an industrial area. So I, one night I just took a picture of that. Uh, well, it was really at dusk, you know, so that's what it looked like.
Lovely.
And these are again fishermen's on that uh send bar, you know. You know, try to get something over there, but you can see the waves. And then, then these things, you know, when they uh go move really fast, you know, you just can't outrun them, you know, just, these people are crazy standing there. There was one of those huge container boats that uh crossed the bay. A guy out on his.
Good shot.
Yeah, beautiful ride. And that's another sunset, people on the beach, you know, just.
Laszlo, tell me again where we are. Where are you here?
Uh, I'm sorry. Warwick Road Island.
Warwick, okay.
The little kid playing at sunset.
Oh, nice.
It's probably Brian or one of his friends.
That's great. I love that.
That's beautiful.
That looked like a turtle to me, you know.
Yeah, it does. That's cool.
That's it.
Beautiful.
That's for me. I, I got lots of sunset pictures, you know, so. I'm all set for the, what do you call it?
Yeah, that's, that's why you chose that topic for the newsletter.
Exactly, yeah. I'm gonna use them myself.
I'm glad you did sunset instead of sunrise. I'd be in trouble.
Well, you can't tell the friend. Uh, here's Moby's. His is in PDF format, so let's see how it will come, come, come out. All right, here it goes, Moby.
Okay, um. Let's see, don't worry, you're not going to get two thousand and twenty-one ruminations. But they all come, they all come from this year. Uh, beginning with one of three self-portraits. Next. There's, there's a second self-portrait. Next. Uh, you may remember a spectacular sunset in uh April. I made this photo from a field next to our house that belongs to a neighbor. It's been enhanced a bit, perhaps excessively, but I'm not sure. But it was a spectacular sunset. Laslow, can you move it up a little? The pot of gold is yours. Okay, next. I'm going to try to make more photos of the moon. But I was pretty lucky with this one with a smartphone. Also, also back in April. Next.
That's good for a smartphone.
Many of you probably know, know this hillside from photos that Brian has shared with us. It's on Route forty-one in Sharon going towards going south. And it's just a beautiful curve. There it is, a cow pasture without cows.
Little flower right there too, you know that.
Okay, next. Let's see if we can, okay, we've got both, maybe a little higher, Laslow. Two different photographs of the same fence. The moral is that sometimes a second try pays off. I think the bottom is, photograph is really much better than the top. This was in a exhibit at the Sharon Historical Society earlier this year titled Renewal Rhythm and Repetition. I think the photograph fills the bill. And I gave it a title diminuendo. For lack of a, of, of a better thought. Next. Daylilies nearby. An interesting example of how a low F-stop can really put the background out of focus while the foreground and subject is in focus. Next.
Good choice.
I find I'm fascinated by the beauty of many of our stamps. And these are two that I put together. And I've got a lot of other stamps sitting around that I will probably photograph at some point. But I think the Mayflower and the constellation go quite well together.
Beautiful, especially the top one, I like the Mayflower.
Well, it's the stamp. Okay, the next few photographs have a little story behind them. Ten years ago, look at the date at the top. Working draft, October fifteen, twenty twelve. Almost ten years ago, I finished two books based on teaching ESL for nearly ten years. When I used my photographs to get the students to write about the photographs. One, the first book was Verbalize the Visual, Book One, Fifty Challenges. Next slide, please, Laslow. And the second book was We Speak English, We Write English, We Read English by Immigrants Learning English. Next slide, please. And that second book was my, their, my students' stories about my photographs. So the two books each had the same fifty photographs in them. On the right-hand page, the first book at the top had the assignment sheet, vocabulary words and questions and hints. And the second book had their stories. This particular photograph I made from a weather vane, which I have in my living room. But the sad story from ten years ago is that I did the books and the sponsor did not get the funding, so the books were never published. Then, early in the, this year, I said to myself in the middle of COVID, well, why don't you see what you can do with them? So I contacted an organization called Ed Advance here in Connecticut, which works with local high schools. And I volunteered to teach English as a second language. After a few months, they invited me in for an interview. And I showed them the, the books. And I said, no, they're ready to go, and they said, fine. You're hired. Hired. So I am now an employee of Ed Advance, teaching English as a second language. Using, using the books that I finished ten years ago. And they, and they paid for printing them. So we're off and running, next slide, please. There we go. Teaching English as a second language at the Husatonic Valley Regional High School, two nights a week. Using the books. Now, I tell this story because we've got room for more students. And if any of you have employees or know of immigrants who would benefit from ESL lessons. There is space in a class, which will basically focus on talking about and writing about the fifty photographs that I put together in those two books. One final self-portrait, thank you, Laslow. There we are, the world is crazy, white is black and black is white. So that's it. Some ruminations from twenty twenty-one.
What did you find? Thank you, thank you so much. Brilliant. All right, Nancy Zanini, Nancy, are you here?
I am.
Oh, that's good, why you have been so quiet, I didn't even know that you.
You know, I, I, I'm not, oh, I forgot which one this was, okay. Okay, since these photographs were all taken while walking my dog. So within a mile or two of my house. And along Mud Pond, and this is just, you know, a crazy looking bird. A flutter. I've spent a good deal of time in my kayak trying to catch a great blue heron catching a fish. And it, it's, it's an exercise in patience. They, they do a fair amount of I won't call it shattering because the sound isn't that loud, but their jaws are incredibly large. I don't know if I even have in here the one, Laslow. Okay, next one, could that be? Oh, this is also, this was the, the last day of August and this little girl and her father were taking turns jumping off the high dive.
I thought it was a relative of yours.
No, sorry, Laslow. Her father was diving and she was, oh yeah, this is, this, this is the different day, this same blue heron that was in the same spot. And his colors changed so dramatically and he just really looks angry.
There's no fish in the pond.
Well, actually, he, he did. And this, this is really, it's, he's looking right at me, I'm in my kayak. So it's slightly soft, but he just stared right at me and I flicked away and this is the result.
Well, cool. Oh, that's nice.
Oh, and this is, you know, just some dead sunflowers that were floating in the pond. As, as somebody had tossed away a bouquet. Sort of sadly romantic. Oops, we're done.
Very interesting pictures.
Oh, I thank you, thank you.
Pamela Peters. Pamela. Pamela, are you here?
I am, I am here, I, I've been just taking all in and, and saying how lucky I am to be a part of this club now.
We are lucky.
Yeah. Nice, nice group of people with time for attention and detail and, and, yeah, that's what life is all about. Anywho. Just a, a, a little, you know, insight of, of why I'm doing this, I, I'm an environmental economist, I'm an environmental economist. And so I have different tools to open up people's hearts and minds towards the beauty and the abundance of Mother Earth, our planet. And I started to really train my eye being behind a film camera for my first TV show because I had no budget. But I had a lot of willpower and so because of that, I actually trained my eye. And somebody said, you have talent, and I said, well, let's do something with it. So this is one of my first photographs on the left after the storm in Mexico. Which is part of a car deck. And this was after a storm, a crazy storm, I thought life on earth would end, but then when you blow it up, it's like this Japanese you know, painting, this was five years ago, my first solo art show at the town hall and tomorrow I'm hanging my second solo art show, so this is the photograph of the first art show. And then another time I'll show more of the people, so I focus on the planet, Mother Earth, and on the people, and it's all about love and light. Next slide, please. So the photos you see are all part of a car deck that, that is a thirty-one day workshop, you know, of retraining people to actually start listening to the language of Mother Earth. And that looks like this, this is the cover of the deck, so I just take three photos. This is on the road towards Great Barrington. And I always like to go, I always like to go lower towards where the things happened. This is a card entitled Roots, to go back to our roots as human beings, making people think, where the heck do we come from? And what's her purpose in life? So it's kind of philosophical. Next slide, please. Ooh, again, I kind of kneel down to where Mother Nature wants to have a conversation with me, and this is the card that calls for standing out. Look at those five little girls, totally excited, there's nothing there, this is the Arctic where I go with my husband on expeditions. And I'm the media girl, so I bring photo camera and film camera, and then I do outreach education with the indigenous people. And I have them make art and I showcase that as well. So we have universal languages connecting kids around the world. I love this one, the colors, and these girls definitely dare to stand out, which we all should do. Next slide, please. This is a photograph I took in Belgium, I'm originally from Belgium, from Antwerp. And we love to bicycle a lot, we bicycle almost towards everywhere. And this is the metaphor for how do you want your life to be? Do you want to be full bloom? Do you want to show your potential? And this is our national flower, the poppy. Or on the right side, do you just want to not show your colors and not go full? And so again, it's like exercise in, in, in making people dig a dip, dig, dig, a dip, dig. I have, I just came back from Manhattan two days, non-stop seminar, so I'm exhausted at this point, but I will try my best. Next slide, please. Oh, yes. This is the card called Pearl. And this was during my honeymoon in Bali, after a nice massage. Totally relaxed, I sat down on the patio and I start to look at a little flower, a, a little greasy plant, and I love it when these drops of, of rain just stick on top, there's some plants that do that. And then I started to meditate on the meaning of pearls. And pearls are beautiful, but it really comes first and foremost because of an irritation. It's an irritation of a sand, a little piece of sand in a, in a, an oyster. And it creates layer after layer and then it becomes this great pearl, so again, in my wisdom card deck, when I give my workshop, I said, out of what irritation did you create something unique for yourself? So it's to basically make people reflect that, you know, sometime in suffering, there is also some, some recipe or some great lesson to be learned. Pearl, next slide, please. Oh, yeah, this is Hawaii. This is actually a mistake. It's a little pocket camera and the shutter blocked, it was a full moon. And so I took a picture and the whole shutter got stuck. So something happens, as you see, the full moon is not a full moon anymore. And the little tip of the mountain in the distance copied itself. And I love it how that lining is like a gold little brush stroke, so this is the card in my card that called Torchbearer. In what ways do you carry light for others? And do you inspire others with or without knowing that? But we all inspire others in any ways. One way or the other, I want more of that or I don't want more of that, you get to drill. Next slide, please. Oh, yes. Clouds, a friend of mine said they look like praying hands. And with me, it's really questioning, are they going towards each other or are they going out of each other? But I love the, I just love clouds, I do a lot of cloud gazing and shape is always moving, it's like the ocean, it's it always changes and I, it's good to look up in life, right? So chin up. Next slide, please. Oh, yes. This was actually a picture taken from my deck in Sharon where we live. And was this last summer? A huge storm gathered, it was summer, August, I think. Huge storm, and, and you just know that it's gonna explode sooner or later, and you hope the, the electricity is not gonna fall out, which in this case it didn't. But I like this, it, there's so many things, again, cloud gazing, is it a ladder, is it an angel, what do you see in here? And, and it's the same with your life, right? What do you see? What is your perspective on life? And, and, and again, you know, what you see is who you are, et cetera, and so I like to make people think about what they see and be aware of, of how they look at life themselves, because that will probably often also be a conduit for what you create in life. Next slide, please. Okay, and this is my, this is just showing what the landscape in the Arctic looks like. This is my husband who took a photo of me taking photos, and I love that always, when people take photos of other people taking photos. So basically, this is me on narwhal watch. I have two cameras out there, the narwhals are, are, are are expected to pass, and it did pass eventually, basically, you're sitting in a tiny tent, it's freezing. Thank God I put the boots on, because the, the, the next time I went out, I didn't put the boots on and I paid dearly. But the sun never sets in the summer in the Arctic. Um, but the sun never sets in the summer in the Arctic. So the light changes just very beautifully and, um, you will, yeah, the, the, it's just to show the inspiration of, of, of being in a different area and the Arctic is phenomenal. Next slide please. So this is the show for tomorrow. And I entitled it Fifty Shades of Blue. Um, some of my photos are also in the Smithsonian Museum Collection and my camera work. Which I'm very proud of, part of an exhibit that my husband put together. Um, so we were just in Greenland this summer. It was quite the adventure with COVID, with tests and all. Uh, but we made it and then you get this as a gift. Uh, open boat ride, eight hours with two Inuit. Um, and, and Iluli Sat is a place where UNESCO now has a observation post. This is World Heritage. And it's, as an environmental economist, I want to show the, both the strength of Mother Earth's ecosystems and the fragility. So you see hundreds of these icebergs just bopping around. And you know that eventually they will not be here anymore. So it's a sadness in a way. Uh, but on the other hand, it's also the marvel, the majesty. Next slide please. So again, I just, I just played a la- a little bit with the blue here and it makes it like what you did, the Dutchman. I call you Dutchman, Ackerman. Um, you, you gave it a hint of an old photo, right? It's kind of a uh, something that you see when you go into a history channel. You see movie from, uh, you know, fifty years ago. It looks like that. Next slide. And we're just gonna get a little preview of what this show tomorrow is gonna look like. I just bought this one, um, because the clouds, again, sun doesn't set. Uh, I think we were on the boat from somewhere six to three in the morning. I mean, exhausting, but it's once in a lifetime, I guess. Um, it's gorgeous, the clouds, the convoy. I, I don't need, do you need to speak? Mother Earth speaks for herself. Next slide. Yeah, I didn't know if I had to crop the water more on the bottom, because if you blow it up, it looks like a, an, an animal. I try to always find a connection of, of how something speaks to me. It's me opening my heart. And it looks like a pharaoh or something. I don't know. I see again, I, I have a vivid imagination. I'm also a writer for kids too. And, um, yeah, this just spoke to me. It's, it's, it's soft. It's, they're soft sh- shapes. But yet it's super strong. So again, Mother Earth. Yes, please. Next slide. Yeah, I called this one desert. Um, just because the sand dunes make me think about this, just to create connectivity with another ecosystem. And I first had it a little bit darker. But then Staples called and said, yeah, maybe we cannot print this, blah, blah, blah. So I started to see, wait, can we make a higher res out of this? So I started to fidget around and then I brought it more to the original tint. And actually I liked it better. So thanks Staple for, for questioning something because it made it better. So this I printed on laminated board. We'll see that, how that will come out. Next slide please. Yeah. This was, I don't know if it's a praying Buddha hands, if it's a bunny. I mean, there's just so much going on here. And this is not your typical iceberg. You know, the floating Buddha, like the Buddha head floating in, in the water, like the Buddha sleeping, so to speak. Uh, there's a heart shape somewhere. I mean, I always try to connect with love and light. It's just my mantra in life. And I find it soft. I find it a very soft, the way the, the whiteness reflects. So, um, I first kicked it out of the exhibit and then I brought it back in. Next slide please. This is actually huge and I call this island, um, right behind this land. And then we went on land to, I interviewed an older Inuit that Martin had not seen for fifteen years, an elder. To talk more about evolution of narwhals was very interesting moment. Um, at one in the morning. Um, you just see the water inside. There is this whole circle that's floating. So there is actually within this iceberg, there is its own little ecosystem. Um, that I thought was in, interesting. Next slide please. I love this one. It looks like icing on a cake. And I didn't wanna play with the colors because the contrast of texture and lights, I just felt like I wanted to bite into this in a way. Tastes like sugary, you know, icing. Um, but once you blow things up, the texture, when you make it bigger, actually looks, looks really interesting. I love this one. Yeah. Thank you. Next slide. Well, this is what you would expect, right? From the Arctic and, and so you have this canyon situation. Um, so there's depth. Um, and you know, we, we needed that. It's like a peeping hole. And then in the meantime, the boat continues very fast. They don't wanna stop because icebergs, there, there's also risk involved when you're too close to icebergs, because something might crack and then, you know, you're, you're really at risk. So, um, we kept going, but this whole thing, this scenery, if you imagine, changes every single move, with every movement forward you take, this whole iceberg shifts. So this is just one of the facets of that same iceberg, of an iceberg that I, that I enjoyed looking at. And I think that's it. And there's a next slide. Oh, and there's might be a next slide. Yes, this one. I don't know. I see something again, Sphinx far, I see an animal in there, but I see a giant in there and there is some very masculine, this is a masculine photo. I don't know why I call this masculine. It just feels like. Yes, exactly. You got that. And I like geometry and color. Um, it's just, yeah, but there's a face of an owl too in the middle, those eyes. I mean, this is again, I love just seeing things. Um, next slide please. Okay. More to come. And personally, we can't have a reception, otherwise I would have, you know, slept some beautiful red wine and rosé, but not allowed.
Terrible.
I can't imagine why, actually.
Yeah. But thank you so much, Pamela. That, that was beautiful.
Thank you.
This is like probably I were going to see, but it's, it's.
Well, I don't know. It's the last extended four times. So I don't think that will happen now, but you, you can see it as of tomorrow afternoon in Sharon Town Hall.
Thank you. Next one is Rafael Swift. Ralph, are you around?
Yeah.
There you go.
We've lost picture, but we still have sound, hopefully.
Can you see?
Yep.
Good. Security.
Right, yeah. Yeah, right. We call her Petunia. This was actually the, probably the first day out with the new lens. Yeah.
We had one of those. We called him Phil.
Right.
Until we came back with the babies.
Yeah, so the first few pictures are just, uh, pictures with my new one fifty to six hundred lens.
Wow, impressive.
Yeah, local wildlife, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it using a tripod or is this handheld?
Uh, this is all handheld. Yeah. So this one in front of us is, uh, let me see. A three twentieth of a second. So the image stabilization on that lens is pretty impressive.
I was gonna say I have the same lens, but I'm not able to, uh, hand hold it. Too shaky.
Yeah, well, a lot of them are braced on like trees or windowsills or cars or, you know, anything.
Right, right.
Yeah.
This is.
Who makes the lens?
Uh, Tamron.
Tamron, okay.
G two of that, the second generation is the one I got.
This is really nice. I like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like this.
Potentially overexposed it a little bit and then I gave it just, uh, in the color toning, just a little bit of blue.
Just throws your eye to the bird.
Yeah. Yeah, I like this guy. He's got his own racing stripe.
Yeah. Do you know what kind of bird that is? I don't know what that is.
Uh, that was a grackle, but, uh, feathers like what they call leucistic. It doesn't have any pigment.
Yeah, I've not seen one like that. Okay.
Normally be black through there.
Okay.
But yeah. And then this is our local rabbit that lives under a rock pile next to our driveway. Yep, she's out all the time.
Oh, gross beak again.
Yep, narrow gross beak. He struck a pose, so he was a victim. You can go to the next.
Good shot. Really sharp, very nice.
Hmm, yeah, yeah, I really like this one. He looks like he's smiling at me.
Yeah. Nice detail on the feathers.
Yeah, yeah. And then this one's a little more impressionistic. Yep, just as I got the focus on him, he took off, so. These are three ravens that were up at the head of my driveway. And, uh,
You can tell them apart. Yeah, from pros.
Yep. All right. And then this is our annual eclipse this summer. I got up before dawn and hiked up up, uh, on Mount Tom, the watchtower up there. Unfortunately, what you see in the foreground are actually trees. So the view wasn't as good as I hoped it would be, so.
You can't really tell that much.
Yep, but it was already moving by the time.
I actually like it a lot. This looks like, you know, some clouds. Halloween too.
Yeah.
This is later on towards the end and I caught that airplane. The sky or the sun.
Can falls, huh?
Yeah.
When we were there.
Yep, our last, our last meeting.
That's came out good.
Yeah.
That's, that's using the long lens too, so.
He must really know.
Have filters for it, but, uh, with that much length, you know, you can get a good. Uh, let me see. Where is it?
Down below that.
Right.
There it is.
Let's see, that's eight tenths of a second.
Be good.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the little ones come to visit. And, uh, this is where I process.
Favorite things.
Yep.
Oh, that's, that's nice.
Yeah.
That's, the soft is really nice.
Yeah, I'm using some foreground leaves to help add to the softness.
Yeah.
And then I just like this. It's like he's going, what are you looking at?
Looking at me.
Yeah. Yep, there she is posing. I love the way the light just caught the eyes.
The hurricane.
Yep, this is last day of Hurricane Ida, so he is just soaked. That's about two hundred fifty pound guy there. Yeah, and this was, uh, fairly recent. This deer's got some weird, weird antler growth going on.
Thank you all. Some really nice animal shots.
Lovely.
Beautiful. My unmuted.
Yeah, very nice. Steve's coming up. It's all black and white. We ran out of colors.
Yeah, I had gotten, um, I'm using a, uh, like a monochrome camera. It's a digital camera, but it only shoots black and white. It doesn't have the color filter on it. So most of these pictures are in New York, uh, where I was playing around with the monochrome. Um, this is in Bryant Park. I just like the lines and the people in the foreground. Um, interesting. Go to the next one. Oh, this is, uh, what I like to do in New York. Uh, there's actually pigeons on the bottom, which I didn't get, but just the collection of images in some of the, uh, uh, street, uh, photos that you see. Uh, so I just found this, uh, this interesting. There's somebody in a dress. There's obviously an erotic image there and some other stuff. So when I'm walking around New York, um, I like to take pictures of, um, uh, street art, if you will.
Nice collection.
Mm-hmm. Uh, this is just a school, uh, bunch of kids walking along Central Park. Uh, you can't really see it that well here, but they're all wearing masks. Uh, the teachers are up there kinda leading and this guy just looked back at, at, at me as, uh, what are you doing? So. Um, I probably would have cropped this more, but, um, the guy's just sitting there. He's in a suit. He's got a cup of coffee. There's garbage all around and then in the background, Central Park almost looks like a, like a painting.
Yeah. That's very, very well called.
Uh, this is one more of that street art things. Um, I probably, this probably would have been better in color, but you can see there's, um, she's looking down at this, uh, abandoned chair that's there and there's this other piece of garbage there and this guy is smiling. Again, it's just the street art that I like to, uh, uh, to photograph when I'm in New York.
It's good fun.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, playing with, this is actually a color image, but it's almost like a black and white image with the lines. Uh, and you see a little bit of color there. Um, but, uh, the other fun thing, uh, you do in street photography is the, uh, uh, the store windows in New York. Some of them are, are quite creative and quite, uh, evocative like, uh, like this one. This one is, uh, uh, it's almost like a movie set. So you've got the, uh, the smoke, the steam, and she's walking. And then there's a guy in the, uh, doorway just ahead of her. So it almost tells a story. I got a kick out of, uh, this one after.
It's a classic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, this is Grand Central, uh, just shooting in black and white, uh, playing with monochrome. Uh, you see the light and just the light hitting her from the back and she's standing on this, uh, grid uh, backlit. I just like the lines of this, uh, this picture and the apple, uh, on either side of her, the apple uh, insignia and then the, uh, the, the people on the top with another apple insignia. I kind of, uh, I kind of like this, uh, composition.
Never seen it so empty.
Uh, yeah, well, there's another one here where it's a longer view and uh, the interesting thing is when I was going to Grand Central, uh, earlier in the pandemic, um, I saw people playing catch, cause there were two people in the whole uh, terminal. And when I was there this week and last week, uh, when I took this picture, uh, it was actually quite crowded and almost back to normal. Interesting. Yeah, that's, um, that's more of a yeah, that's, but you can see there's kind of, uh, a lot of shadows, but a lot of people, um, up at the Apple Store uh, down at the terminal. But again, um, I like the, the grids on the floor and the light coming in. Uh, and with black and white, you're looking at light and shadow. Um, so that's what I've been playing with. Yeah, this this is just the dog, uh, uh, saying hello. She's got the dog in her backpack. Um, you know, it's kind of a funny image. Uh, this one, um, you know, uh, this was in Central Park and it's mothers and kids playing. It almost seemed to me, it's a playgroup. It seemed to me like almost a Peter Pan type thing with, uh, people playing in the woods. Uh, and I just like the, the sunlight, uh, uh, hitting it and the, the, the lines of it. Uh, and it's interesting shooting, um, in black and white, when you know the background is all green and their shirts are all different colors. Uh, and then with black and white, you kind of reduce it to, um, uh, quite a bit. So it's an interesting discipline. Yeah, this is the meditation, um, uh, fountain in the Metropolitan Museum of Art. And I was sitting there taking pictures of it. And then this woman stepped, um, behind, right in the center of the composition. Uh, it looks kind of erotic, but it's not. She was dressed and she's just wearing jeans and a t-shirt, but, um, uh, just the, uh, uh, the composition of just the torso. You don't see her head, and then the fountain, uh, I kind of like the composition, and it worked well in black and white.
Whoa.
Image.
Yeah. Uh, this is just, um, in the museum. Uh, I really like the lines of that statue, um, especially in black and white, where you're reducing, uh, a lot of the noise around it, but, uh, it's something where I just like the, uh, the lines of that particular statue, uh, within that, that quiet hallway. Yeah, this, um, it's a manual focus camera. This didn't come out in focus, which I didn't notice after, but it was just a real peaceful scene where she was, uh, just sitting there reading a book. There was nobody else around. So. And this one, again, I just like the, uh, the street photo. I just like the lines where he's, um, uh, he's bending over and doing something with the, with the mechanics. Uh, you have the bikers in the background, so. Uh, yeah, I thought this was kind of cute, where I'm standing by the, um, a passageway in Central Park, and this little dog walks out, kind of taking a stroll. Nobody else around. It's kind of, kind of funny. And that was, uh, that was it. These are just a few, um, black and white pictures, but it, it, it's interesting, um, because the camera is completely manual. Um, it's just black and white. Um, and, um, just, uh, exploring it, exploring it.
Well, that's, you have done a good job at it.
Yeah.
Exploration. Right? I didn't mean to put you to the last one, Tom, but that's how it came out, so.
Well, the risk of going last is super saturation here, visual.
You never know. All right, here you go.
Thanks, everyone, for hanging in there. Um, it's nice to meet most of you, because even though I'm, I'm a recent member, I've been pretty much completely dormant, so this is my first interaction with the club. So I appreciate it. And, uh, like Dawn, I just got back from Acadia National Park, uh, where I've gone for the past fifty years. So I just, these are all the, a few photographs just from my recent trip. And, and that trip was a, was really vacation. It was family. It was social. So I was grabbing what I could, where I could. I, I do a lot of paddling, um, like Nancy, so this is from my kayak. And, uh, you'll see some others from the kayak as well.
Oh.
So I, I, I do a lot. I try to interact with the loons a great deal, and again, all from my kayak. Uh, that, the remarkable thing, I mean, everybody loves loons, but the amazing thing there is that you've got multiple generations that have grown up seeing people in kayaks, and they're, they're relatively habituated. Uh, it's just finding them and having the patience to stay with them.
Almost doesn't look real, you know, it's, it's so close, so sharp.
That's beautiful.
So I'm, I'm handholding the equivalent of about seven hundred and fifty millimeters uh, on Nikon. And here, this is a juvenile. I, I tend to go in August, which is a little bit late to get the young, you know, you've seen the classic photos of the, of the chicks riding on the parents' backs, uh, which is, I, I've gotten in some previous years, but by August, like this last trip, they're in juvenile form, you see here. But, um, Acadia is a great place to work. Uh, I mean, it's been good to me. I've, I've done two exhibit format books on Acadia, including, uh, their centennial book in twenty sixteen for the national park. Uh, but it's got great variety with the mountains and the surrounding islands. Here are seals on a rock ledge, uh, out on an island. Uh, next, please.
Oh, my.
And, uh, this was a young, uh, harbor seal, and we boated out to twenty-five miles out to what's called Mount Desert Rock, and there was a tide pool. And these young seals were playing. They were racing in and out of the tide pool. And I crept down to the edge, and this one just caught my eye when he popped up.
Wow.
Oh, look at it.
And lots of gulls, of course, being on the seacoast. Uh, here a herring gull with its juvenile chick right behind it.
You got so cool. I mean, that lens is amazing.
Well, it's, yeah, you know, you can't beat big lenses to get close. Uh, it's, uh, the challenge is handholding it a lot of the time, especially from the kayak.
Yeah.
Is always a tough one. But I love the variety up there. Um.
Wow.
And when I get onto something, uh, like this eagle, I see a lot of eagles there. They're fairly habitual. And, uh, it just takes a lot of patience. I'll just wait and wait for a moment like this and try to be ready, which is often hard in a drifting kayak and in the breeze. And most of these wing shots are around a twelve hundredth or sixteen hundredth of a second. Okay?
Wow. Come.
So, uh, the house we had was surrounded by a beautiful garden, and the hummingbirds were just coming in off and on pretty much all day long, and as you know, they, they've got a terrifically high metabolism, so they really have to feed in pretty short intervals. So I would just stand there sometimes for hours, but I always knew they would come back. The hard part is handholding. A tripod just didn't work, because I, I would have, they're too quick. They're almost in constant motion, buzzing from flower to flower. So I had to handhold autofocus and shoot really fast, and this one worked well with the soft background, I thought. Uh, next, please.
Oh, look at this.
Wow.
We were fortunate to have an osprey nest. Uh, it had, it had run the course of rearing the young, and they'd vacated the nest, but they hung around the area, and, uh, so I had a, a number of good opportunities with the ospreys, and this just, this shot fascinated me, just seeing it launch off the branch, virtually upside down. It spotted something in the ocean below, so it's commencing a dive down to the water.
That's incredible.
So, uh, you know, having, I've really been a conservation photographer my whole career, and you know, in contrast to what Bert showed, which was so creative and artistic, I, as a conservation photographer, I have to play it pretty straight, because there has to be a trust from the viewer assigned to what they see, that I authentically experienced that. And that's very important to me. It's, it's more about the experience even than the photograph, and even though I'm pretty much retired now, that's what keeps me going, is I just, I love that the process of being out there and the creative act of photographing. Uh, next, Laszlo.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, we were having a picnic on an offshore island one day, and this tern was just feeding, uh, relentlessly on, in the shallows, right in front of us. I, there were very small minnows running right along the edge of the, of the waterline. So it was a great opportunity. Again, just handheld. Another hummingbird in, in the series. I, I probably took over two hundred frames of hummingbirds, but you just, you play the odds. That's the only way to, to do it when the action's that fast, and you know, a third of them are out of focus at least. I'm not sure whether this is a subadult male. Uh, certainly an immature, I think. Next, please. I like this one because it's sort of the, the simple purity of it, with the, the ocean as the background. And just that one blooming plant.
Like a Japanese.
Yeah, yeah, it has that Japanese simplicity of line.
I know.
And here, just playing around in multiple exposure of lily pads. Again, taken from the kayak. Uh, one thing I really like, having come from film with, with digital, are these rotating camera backs that would let me hold the camera overhead and look at the, uh, you know, the panel on the back to, to be able to compose from higher up when I'm stuck on the waterline. And next, please. That may be it. Uh, just one of the many waterfalls in Acadia. It's, you know, if you've been there, the whole island is pretty much granite. So when we get a heavy rain, uh, which this was the night before, the water just flows instantly in massive runoffs. So what'll be dry streams and pretty much bare rock faces become overnight, literally just new waterfall.
Gorgeous.
Beautiful.
Uh, next. Yeah, and the forest there, especially this summer with the unprecedented rains, uh, was just so verdant. Uh, it was almost more like the Pacific Northwest. Everything covered with ferns, mosses, mushrooms. So that was a good opportunity. Uh, this is an HDR shot combining three different exposures because of the extreme, uh, extreme light tonality ranges.
Beautiful tones.
Uh, next. And I just, I, I like the, again, the simplicity of this, of line and, and shape against the black water. Um, and once again, from the kayak. I'm pretty much a tripod photographer, though, that, that's sort of the way I've, I've always done it. Uh, digital has loosened me up a lot, which has been great. Uh, with the variables ISOs and the versatility of it. Uh, this is simply a rock abstract taken along the shore.
That's really neat.
And here a marsh bog, uh, freshwater shot halfway up one of the mountain sides with a telephoto. I love patterns and textures. It sort of drives a lot of my work. And this is actually one of the trails, one of my favorite trails in Acadia. Uh, going up a rocky gorge. Uh, there's also an HDR shot combining exposures.
There's a spot, almost something like this, you know, in, in, uh, in Mark Mountain. That's, I thought that that's where you took the picture.
Oh. Yeah, yeah, I know. Everything here is Acadia, but, uh, you know, with COVID, that, that's a, a whole other story and slideshow. I've been doing a lot of work around here and finding some areas very similar to this, which is wonderful. And there we go. Thanks, all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, beautiful.
Thank you. Beautiful pictures. Absolutely great pictures. All right, uh, so here we are, back to the main screen. And I think that was it. Did anyone fall asleep or?
No, those were all wonderful pictures.
Yeah, still all over here. I think we had a good, good show. I think we had probably better than we ever did.
Beautiful.
Yeah, good participation and nice variety. Hey, Laszlo, I did want to mention one thing. So, uh, we did the first meeting here, uh, with Zoom. We do want to resume in-person meetings, so that is going to be our goal, is to try to do that as soon, as soon as possible. So I, I think we're planning on trying to do October face-to-face, so, uh, let's just, we'll see, we'll see what happens. We don't know what this Delta variant, but anyway, every month, that's going to be the plan, and, uh, we'll see as we get closer. So just, uh, keep, keep on top of your email so that you can see which way we've decided to go. Um, we'll, we'll let you know a little bit ahead of time. We do have a new meeting place, though, um, in Noble Horizons, uh, early summer, we got the okay to go back there, and, uh, we were going to resume our meetings there, and then with this Delta variant, they came back to us and said that they, they just can't have people, uh, back there again. Um, uh, so we, we can't use Noble, um, in the foreseeable future. So Jeff has gotten the okay to have the meetings at his church, which is, I think it's on the border of Sharon. Is it, is it Sharon and, uh, Armenia?
Yeah, Armenia, uh, uh, now, that, uh, I know, I can bring up two other options. One of them is Bella, so kindly offered his house um, for, for, for a meeting. They got a gigantic, really, really big living room, really.
Converted barn, so it's like a haloffed, uh, big space. So you can actually socially distance, even if you're inside.
Really? Okay.
So that's some, uh, that's, that's another option. And the other one is the place where we're going to have the show, the UCC Parish House, and they would give it to us under the same conditions, you know, like uh, the, the place that Jeff got for us. You know, we give them ten dollars donation for each meeting. And that one is actually quite a bit bigger than, um, uh, the parish house at the other church. Um.
Where is it located?
That, that one is in Cornwall.
Okay. Well, I mean, we have three options, and I guess, uh, I'm going to consider them all temporary, because I'm hoping that we can eventually get back to Noble. So maybe for this season, we just, uh, alternate, and you know, some people are going to have to drive a little farther if it's out in Armenia, and then others are going to have to drive a little farther if it's in Cornwall, so you know, maybe we break it up a little bit and it, or mix it up a little bit, so that, uh, you know, maybe we use all three meeting places at various times.
I think the Wi-Fi would be the only issue, right? Whichever one would have the best Wi-Fi, so that.
Yeah, we know that the church that Jeff got does have Wi-Fi, but we haven't actually, you know, tested it, showing a video or something.
Yeah, I mean, I've been in that church. I've, I've been in St. Thomas's. It, it's right at the circle at South Armenia Road and
Right.
border of Sharon.
Yeah, so it has Wi-Fi. It has, um, I don't think it has a screen for the, for a projector. So we considered, uh, purchasing one. We, we have enough funds to do that, and you can get one for like a hundred dollars. So, um, we do, we do have to look into that. But otherwise, I think it was a twenty-five dollar fee, and they had a full kitchen and um, you know, the supplies and stuff for coffee and, um, whatnot, so it wasn't bad. I haven't seen the one that Laszlo has, but I assume it's kind of the same setup, where they probably have a kitchen setup or something.
And where is Bella's location?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in, uh, Cornwall. Well, actually Sharon, but off, just off of Route seven, uh,
Okay.
near West Cornwall.
I assume you can serve us coffee?
I can serve gallons of coffee.
Coffee's important, no. For me, anyway.
And I have excellent Wi-Fi, so, you know, I'm happy to do it if that's, if that's of interest.
All right, so, uh, so, so just, uh, like I said, uh, you know, keep up on your email, and, uh, we'll make some decisions and let you know what's decided for October. I'm not even sure what our program is for October. Do you know what it is, Laszlo? I think we have a speaker.
That's interesting. I don't know if it is going to work out or not, because we are going back and forth with Jonathan Duster on this thing. He volunteered to give us a, um, a presentation, how to shoot with, uh, with, with iPhone. And, you know, he gave us presentations before. He's a pretty good guy, you know, and he's from Sharon. The only thing that he has decided now that he wants to go to Canada. So during the time when he would have given us the presentation, so I don't know what's going to happen. Uh, they might not let him into Canada, you know, so, um, maybe he's going to stick around, and so I gotta figure that one out, yeah.
I think Canada's letting US people go in, but, uh, the US is not letting Canadians go in, but.
A bit more complicated.
Yeah. All right, so we'll, we'll let people know then what the program is and where it's going to be located, so we still got some things to work out, I guess, for October. So, all right.
I wanted to make an, uh, plug in for the, uh, this year we're doing again, the NECCC. Uh, sending in pictures and the PSA. So by this weekend, I'm going to ask for two images from the people who want to be in the NECCC competition. So, uh, watch for my email.
And, and for new members that maybe not, don't know what that is, like I said, I, if you haven't already gotten the HCC Quality User Guide, I guess, which explains what that is, um, I will be sending that out as a refresher to all members. So when I get home tomorrow, within the next couple of days, I'll get that out so that you'll understand what that PSA NE triple C is and what we're looking for, the sizing of the photos and how to present them, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Great.
All right. Okay, anything else?
Not for me.
Good night.
Bravo to Lazlo and Dawn.
Drive safely, okay? Watch the roads.
It was great to meet all the new people.
Yes, yes.
It was Lazlo. It was Lazlo.
What did I do?
Bye bye.
All right, bye bye.
Bye.